Committee of the whole meeting to work. Mrs. Lake, would you call the [inaudible].
Here.
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 Here, thank you. I would also like to announce that we have an executive session at 6:30 this evening. And I'm going to open this for hearing of visitors this evening because we are voting on two items. We typically do not vote in the committee of the whole meeting, but because these are pressing items, we are going to vote this evening. The first one is on page two, and it is resolution number 192. We are going to approve or revision to the 2012-2013 school calendar, this year's school calendar. And the other one is on page five, resolution number 193, to approve a strength and conditioning agreement with the Ligonier Valley YMCA. So...
There's another one there, is it?
Oh, I'm sorry, there are three. On the back page, resolution number 194, we're going to vote on substitute custodial workers, hiring some substitute custodial workers. So if anyone in the audience would like to comment on any of these resolutions, please come to the podium and state your name and address at this time. Seeing no one, then we will continue with the agenda, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Nagels for the solicitor's report.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nagels. Legislative report, Dr. Logland.
No report.
Thank you, Dr. Logland. EWCTC Joint Operating Committee, Mrs. Kozar.
Thank you. The first thing I'm going to attempt at item number one in your packet is a summary of the JSC's actions for the February 25th meeting. And so I'd like to welcome two of our students, Leah Pompenech and Devon Dowell from EWCTC. They were chosen Students of the Month there for January and November, correct? And right? Leah is in cosmetology and Devon is in maestro.
Collision repair, actually.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was... I apologize. Collision repair. So thanks for why we're here. And we'd like to recognize them. It's a new thing we're starting because we're so proud of our students at EWCTC, and we'd want them to be recognized with their sentence.
Sorry, if I just stand here to speak?
Oh, okay.
To a microphone?
Yes! Bring your students in.
Bring your students.
Yeah! There you go.
First of all, I...
I'm not a student, I weigh by...
I'd like to thank, on behalf of EWCTC, I'd like to thank you all for having us here this evening. We are very, very proud of the Students of the Month, Month to Month, and having an opportunity to come here and have them recognized in front of you is a wonderful thing. Again, we have two students here this evening that we'd like to recognize. First, standing my right here, this fine young man, Devon Dowell. He is a student senior from our collision repair technology program. Devon has done a fantastic job, Devon, with a very demanding curriculum and a very demanding instructor, and he has excelled in every aspect of the program. Mr. Hoffman was unable to attend tonight. He lives way up on... He was unable to attend, so I came this evening to recognize Devon. Devon is an active member of our National Technical Honor Society. Those are students who excel academically, both at the homeschool and in our program. He's maintained an stellar GPA throughout the course of his high school career. In addition, just prior to the November meeting where we recognized Devon, Devon had achieved the status of, and maybe he'll clarify, the status of Eagle Scout. And for those of you that are familiar with that process, that is a very distinguished group of young men, and he needs to be recognized for that, too. So with that, I'd like to congratulate Devon for being nominated as the Student Month for the month of November, and allow him to stand here and maybe say a few comments as to what he plans on doing very briefly, and then any questions that you might have for him, and then we'll move to January Student Month. Okay, Devon?
Congratulations, Devon.
Good job.
On the Eagle Scout as well.
Okay, we'll start off the... Those who know me know I'm not really that act so emotional and very evil. I don't really like to speak eagle on front of people. Also, I realize I just want to thank all of you for recognizing me and everything, and what I plan on doing, doing whatever I have to do. Everything is that I plan on getting a job of somewhere, Aaron, working with Autobots at the end. This might be a long shot, but hoping to get a job of working with aircraft as well. Good job.
We also have here this evening, once again, very proud to have with us this evening, Leah Pompenech. Leah is also a senior from Red Lake Row. She is from the Cosmetology Program. I want to thank Mr. Isaac, who's our instructor, who was able to come this evening. I'll just say a couple of things about Leah, and then I'll let Mr. Isaac speak. And of course, and I miss this, I appreciate Mr. and Mrs. Dowell making it this evening as well to recognize Devon. They are strong advocates of the school. They come to all of our events, and we appreciate that. Leah is, again, a senior. If you haven't been online, on YouTube and places like that, keeping an eye on the school, she shows up in every video that we make. She's in the Cosmetology Program. Most recently, we had Skills USA competition where students from all over the school, primarily from the Cosmetology and from the Digital Media Program, worked collaboratively to develop a video that supported and promoted career in tech ed. And Leah was the star of the show, essentially, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's called Lifted Up. Essentially, what they did was set up props from the front of the building to the back of the building, and started a song, and we showed our JSCs and went on there as they wrote from their singing. Yeah. And then also, you guys saw this already, too, that your school did it, too.
We got second act.
Whose was better? And your opinion? Don't say it. Okay. Anyway, she went from one end of the building to the next, dancing, singing. A lot of the students participated. She did a fantastic job, and we're very proud of her. She's, again, active in the National Technical Honor Society. Anything that we do organize at the school, she participates and takes the leadership role. We're very proud of her, and I'll let Mr. Isaac speak to her as well.
Well, thank you for having me.
You'd like to?
No. Leah has finished her cosmetology hours. We're preparing her for the state exam. We'll get her here very shortly. I'm sure with whatever she does, and I know she was talking to me about possibly owning an salon, so there's some of your... So she'll be entering into that. I know she's going to attend in St. Vincent, and the energy that she brings forth with all the videos, which we've done a lot of videos, we've done some photo shoots within my classroom, has just been incredible and will be...
Sorry.
...best in June.
Stop. Well, I guess that pretty much summed it up. After I graduate, I'm going to be going to St. Vincent. My parents are in the audience over here. Thankful for them. I'm going to be going to St. Vincent. My mom works there, so it's going to be easy, I guess. I'm going to take business management there so that I can have my own salon, Mr. Isaac said. That's what I'm going to be doing after high school. But like Mr. Isaac said, I finished my hours already, so I can go get my license and hopefully work already. Other than school stuff, I play softball. I am also a trainer, athletic trainer for the wrestling team and the football team for each other. So I'm a busy girl. I work at Chick-fil-A also, so I'm kind of busy, like I said, but that's pretty much it. Are you questions?
Any questions, either the students from the board?
I thank you for being such great representatives for Lake Row and making us so proud, and thank you for coming to our meeting, letting us talk to you and hear what you're doing. That makes our job much nicer, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Just like we say at EWCTC...
You don't have to say it for the rest of the room. Put it up towards your real...
Thank you for having me.
We should welcome to it, of course.
Appreciate you.
Congratulations.
Good night.
Thanks for being all. Take care. See you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mrs. Kozar. Very nice. Finance, Mrs. Allard.
Thank you. Next week we'll have the Treasurers' Report and the Billings on the agenda, as well as budgetary transfers. Amendments of the Finance Committee meeting are in your packet, item number two. And there's a $5,000 gift from Badly ETO on behalf of the George R. and Janet E. Desco Terrible Foundation. Another wonderful gift, which if you read in your information, it will be used throughout the district, not just at Badley School. And we have a presentation regarding advertising on our website, and it will be done now by Mr. Joe Holt.
Thank you all for inviting me down here today. There's only three buttons on this thing, I hope you're alright. I'm taking a change. Okay, this presentation is specific to Lake Row, but it was also developed for the rest of the world. That's me, I'm Senior Vice President of the School Acquisition for the company that is putting the Unite Business Program into schools districts across the country. We have expansion plans. Right now, we have almost 100 districts in Michigan signed up to our program, and we have offices across the state. We are now opening in Illinois, obviously Pennsylvania, Indianapolis, Indiana, and What is alternative revenue development? That is the parent company, and this is our mission statement. We are formed to develop new, non-traditional, significant, and sustainable revenue streams for school districts across the country. And we do this with commercially sponsored partnerships and banner ads that go on the website. With the individuals that work for our company, these are some of our experiences and places we've worked. My personal background is 30-plus years at the Detroit News and Detroit Free Press, selling advertising, marketing, and sales management. Let me just spend much time on this slide. This is a slide that everybody's well aware of across the entire country. Programs are being cut, are being eliminated because of the bottom of your budget is just basically running. This is how we address the problem. We are actually the only socially responsible marketing program in development in business right now. We believe that it helps families with opportunities and coupons and offers they can't get anywhere else. The district gets unrestricted funds. Whatever we generate for you doesn't have to be put into the department law or any of those. You can use it at your expression. In fact, nation attendants have told me, "Oh, I would buy some new banners," because they haven't done that for you in 25 years. The sponsors give a return on their investment because they're reaching a demographic which are basically moms and families with kids in K through 12. The family is a highly targeted demographic. It's probably second only to CEOs and CFOs around the country because that's where the purchasing is being made, and purchasing decisions in the home. And it's generally moms that are on the websites. So that's an age, it's an age and lifestyle demographic that is highly targeted. And this is the appeal. We are addressing parents, families, not kids. We never target the kids. You will never see $1,000 Air Jordans or $3,000 leather jackets, or Red Bull, or anything that's inappropriate and not even for the kids. You know, if you had a company, a window company in Michigan, for example, runs Buy Two, Get One Free, your fifth grader doesn't really care about being in those sort of houses. So we're targeting basically at parents and families, educators as well. We've had a lot of interest in companies like insurance companies and places like that that want to reach the staff and administration within the district. And of course, the community is involved at a very local grassroots level. This is kind of a snapshot of our growth. We were formed in '09 and basically took off recently. What you see on the right-hand side are the number of page views, which is basically the inventory or the marketing asset that your district brings to the program. And you can see the growth of that. These are our expansion plans. Right now, we're focusing on the Midwest, but we have other markets that are interested in our program and have approached us. So what are the rules of the road? How does it work? I mean, there's sponsors, and banner ads that run on your website. What is your input, and what do you have the ability to do here? The district and the school has code approval rights, which means if you see any banner ad on your website that you don't like for any reason, you give us a call and we'll have it off with them now. Program, again, does not target the kids, and we pre-vet or we vet everything that goes onto the banners prior to them running. And so you'll never see anything that has anything to do with sex, tobacco, alcohol, religion, and you can add weapons and ammunition and politics to that as well. It is a turnkey program. By that, all you have to do is load the code, the line of code that we send you, it's called the line for your district, and it goes on every page of the district and school websites, top and bottom. And those are the impressions or the assets that we have that we can market for you. Here's a screenshot of one of our districts in Michigan, Farmington. Hudson Mills, a local Michigan ice cream company. That banner rotates at the top every eight to 10 seconds, along with the little buttons on the side. And so as you're coming onto this page as a viewer, immediately you have three impressions. Those rotate every eight to 10 seconds, and depending on how long the person visits that page, that's how many impressions get served. And again, those are the assets that we're looking for you. Here's another screenshot of Warner Shores over on the west side of Michigan, and here's Grand Rapids Public Schools. You can see that the application is the same, we try to incorporate the banner into the colors and backgrounds so it's seamless and flexible. We are also constantly searching for additional elements that can bring revenue to the school districts. Right now, we're just launched an American Idol concert series that probably wouldn't play too well in Pennsylvania because Matt Giroud is a Michigan native. In fact, went through the exciting school system. He was a finalist about four years ago, and we're sponsoring concerts that will actually develop revenue for the school districts. The E-MO, which is the bottom left-hand corner, has been a challenge for us. We thought we'd have this operating within two years, and it is still a challenge. But once we get it going, what happens is the families register with your district, and it can be grandma and dad's, it doesn't have to be anybody local. And every purchase that's made there, a percentage of the commission is paid, between 2% and 8% for every purchase. The upper right is what we call our Friday folder. So any kids from K through maybe five or six have a folder, they take their work home, come on and dad at the end of the school week, and we anticipate selling that to sponsors by putting logos on it. And then we have a website or a mobile application that we're developing as well. We specifically go to sponsors and ask for a landing page or landing packing strategy. Right there, you see a varsity Ford landing page that we developed for them. And what this does is it's a tie between the banner that they see on your website and their own individual website. And it kind of says something about being involved with the school district and helping the kids with the revenue that they're actually paying for the kids. Now, your local sponsors will pay a monthly fee. Depending on the size of the district, it could be as much as $100 a month, which we split with you. In fact, Dan's negotiated a little better policy than that, it's about $60. But we encourage all of the sponsors to do some kind of extraordinary offer that's not available anywhere else. In fact, we've had probably the best offer that we've had was a free orthodontic treatment from a local orthodontist chain. They have 50 stores in Michigan, and it was a $5,300 value. And I was there when the young lady won the orthodontics, and it was very, very gratifying. There is no way her mom committed it, so I wish it were afforded, but we're not that These are some of the sponsors you recognize, maybe some national sponsors, Life Forward and Honda, Valvoline, and some of our local Michigan. These are new regional sponsors, which means they're buying every district that we have in our program in Michigan. Discount Tire doesn't operate here, but similar to that always. Certainly Comcast is here. ETV Energy is a local energy company from Michigan. Chrysler is very interested. Valcable is all over the U.S., and we are growing. We have a new chamber program that we're testing in Michigan, working with the local business, community chambers. And what that does is it gives us a lot more coverage of the local community and the local businesses. It also gets you to, obviously, the social media, getting communications out of the vehicles. District clustering is very important to our program. Some individual districts, like Lake Row, we would need other districts here to make it more successful. This is, in fact, the Kent County, which is Grand Rapids area, where we have a cluster of districts, and we've got Arby's interested and some other regional-type sponsors that will buy your district there. So the more districts that come on board, the more you help each other. It is a long-term revenue development program. Contract is for three years, and it's because it takes a long time. As this is a new concept for schools, it is also a new concept for sponsors. Moving from the printed product that I came from, my history, into an online marketing is something that a lot of retailers don't struggle with. They're not sure how to move. So it takes us a while. We start out locally by telemarketing into your community, and it helps if you can give us a list of businesses and contacts. I'll get into that in a second. But then we move into the regional and the national sponsors. Now, local revenue, I mentioned before, it is a monthly sponsorship fee. It's not, has nothing to do with click-throughs or, you know, any of that kind of stuff. But we get into the regional and the national revenue, and that's on a cost-per-thousand basis. So they will pay for every time their banner actually is viewed by one of your fans. So the more traffic we have on your website, obviously, the more money you can generate. Again, local revenue involves a considerable amount of patients. We are up in terms of how many districts are being purchased by one advertiser or one sponsor. Regional participation, you can see the growth there as we get more districts aggregated into our program. Then we obviously get more attention from the larger dollars. And we actually want to get into the advertising revenues and not the donation revenues. The advertising revenues are much, much greater. This is our revenue projections, again, based on district growth projections that follow along with that. This is what we paid up to date, and we're only just beginning. So we do have some incentives in effect for the first 25 districts that join Pennsylvania. I mentioned the 60-40 split. Most of our programs right now are 50-50, so 60% comes back to the school district. And we have a district referral program. And so if you provide us with one lead, which means name of the business, name of the contact or decision maker, an email address, and a phone number, then we will share an additional 5% of the revenue. We've gotten a lot of press coverage, not just in Michigan, but also across the U.S. We have Chicago Tribune, USA Today, Long Island Newsday. We've done quite a few papers, and it's all been positive as the program. Right now, we're negotiating with your successor, not prior to the year-to-date. I'm sure we can work out to the particular district.
How quick does the district start seeing revenue?
What a surprise you'd ask that question. It, again, depends on a lot of factors, how responsive your local community is, how many districts are participating. I can tell you of an example. In Monroe, Michigan, if you're familiar with Michigan or not, it's way down here, right at the Ohio border, and there is only Monroe participating. So we can't get the local auto dealers to participate because the districts that are around Monroe have not participated. So they can't reach their entire market, and so that kind of stifles the amount of revenue that you're generating. And that's what I mean by the clustering and the contribution. It really does all over there.
How many school districts do you have in Michigan?
Almost 100. We have eight in New Jersey.
How many are you talking to locally, less than one county, maybe not even that?
How many have you talked to here?
Yeah.
I believe we have six, seven districts. Do you have an SBD?
Seven or eight, yeah.
Seven or eight.
Unless it proposed launch, when, if, I mean, all things being evil, when do we launch?
Well, I think that, correct me if I'm wrong, if we were to authorize moving forward with this, and again, I just want to raise my hand, I think if we were to act on it, it would be relatively quick turnaround before we would have the website on the ground, correct?
It's up to your web tech, folks. How quickly the code can get loaded. We can have a code to you within a few minutes.
So something can happen before the end of the year, so...
Yes, absolutely.
It would happen.
Summer is a tough time for sponsors, as you know, because of what traffic drops all the time. Still there, but there's...
It's about advertising for local businesses in a conflict with a national business that covers the same thing. Like, well, the only answer was here before, a collision repair shop and a national firm that might do that.
Maybe a better example would be Home Depot against the local hardware store.
Okay.
The way we deal with that is that this is a program to benefit the kids, so we're trying to stay away from exclusivity of category. We don't actually go out and solicit, though. I mean, if we had Home Depot running, you probably might stay away from your local hardware store. We try to separate them as much as we can, because we have had multiples, obviously in categories. Autos, for example, we got all three of the big ones.
With the beginning, you spoke about depending how long you stay on the website, you will see the particular banner so many times.
Yes.
And do you make an effort in that sort of succession not to have the local and the national kind of going against each other?
We do. We make an effort for that not to happen, but it can happen. Just because the buttons on the side of the tiles rotate at a different rotation than it has itself.
I see.
So we can control the main banner so that they're not right one way and the other, but the ones on the side are running at a different tempo, so it's conceivable they could be on at the same time. It hasn't been an issue for our sponsors today. Doesn't mean it could be.
Are there any other questions for Joe? Joe drove out from Michigan, so I want to thank you for coming, and you had a long drive.
It's a little bit of drive back.
And as Joe had mentioned, we're in the process of just sort of talking about the agreement. He's been working with Dan, so as we gather more information, we'll come back and share with the board before you fill in the... so as we gather more information, we'll come back and share with the board before any formal actions would be taken.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for coming. Safe trip home. The last item in my report has to do with the property tax revenue bait program from the state of Pennsylvania. You find a notice about it in your packet. And this is something that there's been a lot of discussion about taxes and the various programs that pertain to them. And this is something that we hear usually from their state representative, that everybody is welcome to participate. And there's a notice about it giving you a place to go to get the forms. Thank you.
See, this is one of the things that came up, I think some of the constituents are here a couple of times, a couple of months ago, and they're bringing this up about revenue bait. So they weren't aware of the program, is that the point?
I don't know what they're aware of.
Yeah.
But according to what we've been able to find out, that it's a number of people in Westmoreland County are using it.
Yeah, what we've been able to determine is about 23,000 individuals in Westmoreland County are eligible and are utilizing the program. They were not necessarily able to provide any information for it down tomorrow.
I understand.
But this notice is just something that we thought that we would, we posted it to our website too. So anybody who's interested in learning more about it, they can go to our website. And there's a link also to the Department of Revenue, that they can go and get the application.
I think it's a good idea, it's unfortunate that the folks in which I'm working don't know, it's corny. And you know, given what the constituency said a few months ago. But you know, the only other question I have with this, and it's a flaw, is that if the folks who are 65 and older and access to the website are going to be slim at night. So maybe, you know, if you go crazy and do some kind of mailing just an hour time or something. I mean, they all read the job bulletin. Maybe they'll publish it tonight.
I think they do put out a mail. I'm glad, what I was going to do is I had a copy of the notice, I was going to put it through to the newspapers tonight so that they will have a copy. But yes, they were supposed to do mailing, and when I contacted them, how you do on the mailing list is actually that by filing an application. And once you file the application, now you're on mailing list. But all of the representatives, like for example Representative Reese, when we met with him, they go around like to different areas, he referenced, they go to Lipperton. There's a location that they go and they have representatives coming in to question and helping individuals to qualify, complete the forms. So just trying to help them to.
Can we get them down to like Youngstown, U D Township, sort of Bay Harbor, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, we actually spoke to Mr. Reese, and I shared some information with him, and I'm just waiting to hear back. But we'd seen we were stuck to the idea, I can't speak on his behalf, but he didn't, he wasn't opposed to, he thought it was a good idea.
Thank you, thanks, Dave.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Belgrado. Under education and planning, we'll begin with a student report with Kevin, hi Kevin. Mrs. Swiger pointed out, he did a nice big font, he's not reading well, or reading a lot.
Good evening, everybody. I would first like to apologize on behalf of Blair, she couldn't make it tonight, she had to attend a funeral viewing on short notice. On the agenda, the fourth thing you'll see is the Dunkin' for the Dominican. The interact clubs from Latrobe and Derry are hosting this charity basketball event. As stated earlier, it's called Dunkin' for the Dominican. It's to be held at our senior high gym on Friday, March 15. The doors open at 6, but the game will start at 7:00 P.M. And this is one of those things where the cheerleaders are the ones that play in the game, and the boys' basketball teams are the ones that get in the cheerleading uniforms and cheer on the girls. I'll also be there in the Wildcat costume, so if you see me, feel free to say hi. Both schools are hoping to raise $5,000 each to be donated to the Latrobe Rotary Club to be sent down to the Dominican Republic. Because many people there don't have necessities like clean drinking water, for example. Besides the game, there's also going to be basketball, or basket raffles, excuse me. Games with a crowd, like a free throw competition, and I know that the male cheerleaders will be throwing t-shirts into the stands. And there's also a concession stand. Admission is free, so I encourage you all to come, it's going to be a fun night. Also, this Friday, in the senior high gym earlier that day, the Red Cross Club at the senior high will be hosting the annual Red Cross Blood Drive. Students and faculty from the senior high school have been signing up to donate blood all through last week. And walk-ins are also welcome, so anyone from the community can come in and take part. The school goal is 90 pints, and the drive will be running from 7:45 a.m. until 1:00 P.M. So if you're interested, stop by and hook you up. Thank you, that concludes the student report.
Thank you, Kevin. Item B, Dr. Tepper has provided the 126-day enrollment report, and that's item four in your packet. Do you want that over, or do you have any questions? Under educational programs, we're going to have a senior high school presentation this evening. Mr. Crayley, and he's going to introduce the senior high school teachers that are here, although I believe probably most of you are familiar with all of them. As you're probably aware, three elementaries have actually presented over the last few months of various programs. And in speaking with Mr. Crayley and Mr. Ocasio at the high school and Mr. Schibitz, they decided that they wanted to highlight the dual enrollment program at the high school, which is not new, but has had some changes made this year. And so I think it's a combination of all of the dual enrollment programs and the opportunities that our high school students have. So without me talking more, I'm going to introduce Mr. Crayley.
Thank you, Mrs. Swiger. There are a lot of exciting things happening at the senior high right now. We're seeing a lot of great things happening, we're moving into spring, with Wizard of Oz, with our student athletes doing so well, there's just a lot of excitement going on. I will say that one thing that we continue to talk about, and I know Mrs. Swiger had mentioned, dual enrollment is something that we approached you on before, we have discussed. But it continues to expand and grow, and we are extremely enthusiastic about the dual enrollment opportunities for our students at Great Latrobe. And I'd like to share a little bit with you tonight, and maybe share a little bit of data with you as we continue to move along as well with the dual enrollment. We're starting to get a little bit more of a clearer picture in terms of what it is meaning for our students, and how our students are benefiting within the dual enrollment opportunities that we have here. Before I get started, I have to say that the dual enrollment program, which obviously is headed in the right direction as far as we're concerned, would not be possible if it wasn't for our staff and our teachers. Tonight I have three teacher leaders with me who are going to talk specifically about different aspects that they have experienced and developing their course for dual enrollment. And each one have a little bit of a different twist, and I would say that of all of our teachers, each and every one of our teachers had to do something a little bit different in order for their course to be certified as a dual enrollment course. And we appreciate that. I'm very proud to be standing with the teacher leaders tonight and with other teachers as well, as they have stepped up the plate and they have provided this opportunity for our students. As I mentioned, this is an opportunity that our students have, but it's nothing new in terms of the past. I just want to back up to when Dr. Tepper was principal, we had a dual enrollment opportunity as well. Students were typically going off-campus where they were taking courses at local colleges in the area. That is still continuing, okay? That dual enrollment opportunity meant that our students were leaving our campus, going off-site. What we are talking about with this dual enrollment, and what makes it unique, as I mentioned, it's our teachers in our building that are providing the instruction where our students do not have to leave, which helps many of our students who don't have the opportunity to leave off-campus. Just want to share with you some figures here, going back to 2010 and 2011. If you look in that category, you will see that we had 15 students going to WCCC, two going to St. Vincent. And we started a new program with Mount Island Wishes as well that year. Unfortunately, we didn't have any students enrolled in 2010-11, but we did pick up three students in 2011-12. As you see, our dual enrollment numbers continue to go up with the students that are going off-campus in 2011, 2012, with WCCC and St. Vincent. And in 2012, 2013, those numbers continue to incline. But the big difference, as you will see, is right at the very bottom, okay? That is our new initiative with Penn Highlands. This is Cambria County Community College. It is a school that has offered dual enrollment here in our building. We only had 107 students, and I say only, I emphasize that because I truly believe that this is just the tip of the iceberg. And if we show the numbers to you next year, I would expect that to increase in a way. Just looking at the schools that we are currently working with and giving you the price per credit. Penn Highlands at $3,000 for credit, Mount Island Wishes $4,500 for credit. And we are looking to expand to St. Francis in the area of our world languages. It's the one school that will offer dual enrollment for our world languages in our French, German and Spanish. We look to have that for next year at $50 for credit, which we're very excited about. Looking at the courses offered at Great Latrobe Senior High School, in 2012, 2013, we had a nice, for year one with Penn Highlands, a nice variety of courses that are currently offered. Most of these are three-credit courses, with the exception at the bottom, we do have AP Biology 8, which is a four-credit course, which is offered through Mount Island Wishes, and AP Literature as well through Mount Island Wishes. This year, they're kind of offering. What we are hoping to do, and this is where the exciting part is, we are hoping to add all of the courses to the right as our proposed new additions. Now, not all of them perhaps will be official, we're still working out some details, especially in the areas of current issue in psychology. We have some work to do, but we are hopeful that these courses will be added for new additions for our students on-site for dual enrollment. Why would you take a dual enrollment course at Great Latrobe? Two simple reasons, time and money. Students currently at college, students that have gone on, who come back and speak to us, they are extremely busy people. They are working jobs, they are involved in extracurricular activities at their schools and universities. You know, not every student's going to max out their schedule with dual enrollment classes, but if they're able to pick up some credits in high school, this may lessen their load whenever they go to college. It might give them an opportunity to experience, maybe perhaps they need some extra hours at a part-time job, or they want to get involved on their campus, and this will give them an opportunity. But certainly, the significant factor that we are looking at is saving families money within our district. When we look specifically, if a student took five dual enrollment classes at Great Latrobe Senior High School through Penn Highlands, and they earned 15 college credits, which is attainable, that is realistic throughout their high school career, at $39 for credit, they will have earned, they would have spent $585, which is equivalent to 15 credits of approximately a semester in college. An example that we pulled out, University of Pitt, if a University of Pitt student took 15 credits, and I do want to point out, if this was a part-time student taking 15 credits at Pitt, they would have paid $555 per credit, which would total $9,825 per semester. Look at that savings that a student possibly could have just by picking up some credits here at that high school.
We know those numbers.
Looking at a three-credit course, just to look at some other schools, a three-credit course at Penn Highlands costing $117, St. Vincent $2700, Pitt $1,165, Penn State IUP. Okay, we just wanted to look at some local schools, schools that a lot of our students go to, and sort of give you a, just an idea of what that would cost as well as savings there. 107 students through Penn Highlands course, this is what I really want to emphasize, and how I believe this is such, why this is so exciting. 107 students this year enrolling courses cost our students and our families total, okay, on a three-credit course, $12,519. If we looked at our least expensive out of the four schools that we showed you, the least expensive being IUP at $400 to credit. That's, if those students were to be part-time students at IUP, would have cost $128,400, which is an average savings of about $115,000. That's this year alone, that's significant. That is talking about the least expensive school on our list, and that is why we are very excited at the senior high. We think this is an opportunity for our families to save significant dollars as we move forward. And as we add more courses to our list, that number at the bottom, the savings, I believe would be much higher. And if you're looking at some other schools, private schools and so on, it's very conservative. So we are enthusiastic regarding that. At this time, what I would like to do is I want to introduce Mr. Brandt, okay? Mr. Brandt teaches astronomy at the senior high school, is a teacher leader for our science department. He has had a unique experience within his dual enrollment course, and I'm going to give him an opportunity to reflect upon that. So, Mr. Brandt?
As Mr. Crayley said, the course that I am currently teaching with Penn Highlands is the astronomy course, which is a year-long collective open primarily to seniors here at the high school. This year, 17 of my 98 students signed up for the Penn Highlands credits for the course. It took just a minor tweaking of the grading, which is simple to deduct from the grading system. And in the fall, I met with one of the instructors up at Penn Highlands, we drove up there for a meeting, and sat down, we looked over the curriculum, and found that what I'm teaching is actually more than what they're covering in the course of a semester. So it was very naturally a fit that they would fit together. But in addition to that, last month, one of the instructors from up there came down and did an observation of me in the classroom. It was nice to be able to have another astronomy instructor come in and actually talk about what I was covering and to toss ideas with. But out of it came, you're better equipped here at the high school than we are at Penn Highlands. Can we bring our students down, utilize your planetarium for some of the lessons? So in April, their students are going to drive down, and we will be putting on a joint planetarium show utilizing our facility to help reach those students as well. So it's a great partnership where their students are going to benefit, our students are going to benefit with the credits. But we're also not just looking there, we're hoping as this is a stepping stone, that in the future, we could branch off to other universities to give students other possibilities. I heard someone mention about, are these credits transferable? And there is actually, if you go to the Penn Highlands site, there is a link there that will take you to where all of the college credits will transfer to. So you can actually go to their site, the students before they enroll knew if they were going to a certain college, whether or not they would accept those credits. And even through the community college, they have to be accepted at any of the state schools. It's more questionable with a science credit transfer, as a science credit, we're adjusting that. So so far, it's been a great experience that we look forward to voting upon. So now we'll let Mr. John Maines speak.
Good evening. I'm going to talk about Penn Highlands from more of a department perspective. Currently in the math department, we have approximately 60 students taking a math course that are earning a college credit right now. Six out of eight of the math teachers are offering courses for credit. Those courses are AP Calculus, Regular Calculus, Intercal calculus, Precalculus and AP Stats. Some of the teachers had to modify, like Mr. Crayley said, modify our curriculum so that they could earn college credit. For an example, Kelly Eckert is our AP Statistics teacher. She had to add a section on confidence intervals to her curriculum. Nikki Shannon and myself teach Precalculus. When we sat down and looked at the course syllabus from, yeah, the course syllabus from Penn Highlands, we had the opportunity to choose a college algebra course or a precalculus course for the precalculus that we teach. But if we chose the precalculus course, we had to add in a section on limits that we've never taught before. But after looking at, after looking at credits and how they transfer, the precalculus credits transfer more easily, or easier than the regular college algebra credits, so we did that for our students as a benefit. That's basically it from a college, or from our department perspective. But as I had this opportunity, I wanted to commend my department for one other thing, for our outstanding Keystone exam results. We showed a 12% increase over the last, over last year's PSSA scores, and I am confident that these scores will take us from number six in the county to number one, which I'm very proud of the department for. I equate this strong performance to a math team that constantly shares resources and best practices, and to our principals who have always shown their support, so thank you. Our next presenter will be Mrs. Mack with the art department.
Hi, I'm Lydia Mack, I teach art here at the high school. And I already had art history, two art history courses, Art History 1 and Art History 2, that I was teaching here at the high school. Do I need that? Oh, I'm sorry. I had to do a PowerPoint because I knew I'd be a little nervous and forget what I was going to say. So anyway, I was teaching Art History 1 and Art History 2 already, and Mr. Crayley approached me about teaching the class for Penn Highlands, the Penn Highlands credit. And I looked over the syllabus and it was different, especially because their textbook was a history of Western art, which was really a survey of Western art course, whereas my course before was much more a multicultural. much more a multicultural, very general introduction to art history course, something that would prepare our kids when they go to college if they took art history, but not really as rigorous as a college class. So I basically remounted the whole course and using the text, analyzed the text to their curriculum, to their syllabi. It's much more rigorous, the students, I lecture every day, the students have to take notes, they're required, it's part of their grade. I give a comprehensive midterm and final on half of each, on half of the course content. Students do have to retain a lot of information, they're expected to know the artist, the style, the date of the work, the significance, excuse me, the significance of the work, and they're expected to give a talk about that. For example, there's Pollock Fegos and all his slander. I realized what, after I made this presentation, that it's, I put a couple of naked statues in here, so I didn't say anything. The kids are all on this, by the way. Anyway. That's art. That's art. Okay, so anyway, I also looked at higher level painting skills. We were thinking at higher levels before, but now even more so. They do a lot of activities pertaining to, in preparing for essay writing, we do a lot of writing, almost every week they're writing an essay. For example, more naked statues. David, David is a very prominent subject, especially during the, in Florence during the Italian Renaissance, and so we looked at the four different Davids that we studied and they did comparisons. They looked at it in a lot of different ways, and they ended up writing an essay on it. So, you know, David, 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 David. And more essays, for example, Duccio versus Giotto, I'm spending a little time on the Renaissance here, classical revival versus visiting traditions. So looking, sort of doing a comparison between the Middle Ages and moving into the Renaissance and what these two, these two artists that were contemporaries of one another, how they were really working in different styles. So that's Giotto and Giotto. And also, with all the Moodle training we've had the few, last few years, I already had courses on Moodle for Art History 1 and Art History 2, but I actually put this new course on Moodle as well. It's a really good tool for kids that have plans, to keep them up to date, they can get online at home and keep up with the course, and also I put some supplemental assignments that were required for the kids that were taking the course for credit at Penn Highlands, and also some other assignments that I used Google Docs and Moodle both for some of the, some of the assignments. So basically tying it all together.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. As I said before, when I approached the podium, I said how excited we are to see your high school, what is going on. There is so much happening and so many opportunities for our students, and again, I can't thank our teachers. Essentially, our teachers are becoming adjunct professors, if you will. They're making agreements with local colleges to accept their curriculum, to submit their curriculum, to accept criticism of their curriculum, and to amp up the rigor within our own course. And when I hear things about what's going on with our, as Mr. Mainz pointed out, with our Keystone exams increasing, I know we're moving in the right direction, okay? Beeping up our curriculum, making it more rigorous for students, I think we're going to see great, great results. So I'm very proud of the work that they are doing, and that they're going to continue to do, and as this program moves forward, I think it's only going to have far, or greater and greater benefits. I can tell you as a parent, okay, as a parent, if I look at some of our parents in the audience that are there, I couldn't help but feel the sense of, you know, they're excited about this as well, and the opportunities that will be there for their children, and something that we look for. Thank you very much. We appreciate the opportunity. Any questions from the, yes, Mr. Mack?
We have questions.
Sure.
I had written, did you say credits transfer? And then you said they transferred to state schools. What about private schools?
Yes, that's a very important question. They will transfer to most schools, if not, they will transfer to most schools, and what we are telling students, this is so important, that before you sign up for a dual enrollment course, it's a good idea, and most of the students, we're talking about seniors, some juniors, they're taking these courses, and some exceptions, sophomores, but to call ahead to these schools, call various schools and find out if they will accept those credits. We are encouraging students to do that. Our guidance council is saying, call universities, ask them if this credit will transfer.
So this is being down to the guidance department?
The guidance department is instrumental in this, yes. Yes, as they schedule the students, they are, I know our guidance councils are taking calls from universities, they're calling schools and making sure credits will transfer.
And later on in our agenda, there's the approved dual enrollment agreement with Seton Hill.
Yes, that is a little bit, that is, I talked about the two different types of dual enrollment. That is specifically, I believe, for a student that is going to be going onsite to Seton Hill, but I will tell you that we're also looking with Seton Hill, we're in conversation with them about some of our other courses, such as our AP Chem and AP Physics here with onsite.
And I'd like to commend you for the Penn area thing, the Penn Highlands. I think that we clearly needed an agreement that was more financially doable for many of our students than what we had before that was worked out, and I'm very pleased that it was worked out. So congratulations to all of you who worked that out.
Thank you very much. Any further questions?
Just a comment, a real special thank you, obviously to these three teachers, but there are, how many teachers at the high school that are teaching at the Penn?
Currently, currently I have eight teachers that are...
And this is totally voluntary on their part, as far as moving forward with this program, and this is the first year, so clearly, these eight people, including Jason, John, and Lydia, have really put themselves out and have really understood the benefit that this provides for parents, so thank you very much. We do appreciate it.
Thank you.
On your agenda for next week will be to approve the 2013-2014 school calendar, and that's item number five in your packet, and you need to discuss that before, or if anybody knows any information right now. So that will be on your agenda then for next week. Also, on your agenda for next week would be to approve the NHS, and that stands for Northwestern Human Services, Pennsylvania Agreement with GLSD for 2013-2014. Dr. Solis, would you like to give us a moment?
This is a school located in Greensburg that serves special education students with emotional disturbances, and it would be a new contract for us, and an added fee for a student at the high school.
Would they actually come here, or would they...
No student would attend that building in Greensburg. It's located in a middle school district.
Would they go there full-time?
Yes.
So that would be on your agenda for approval also next week. There are several curriculum changes that are needed to be passed for the senior high school. Mr. Kralik, do you want to just go a thesis briefly with us?
Sure. Just want to mention a side note, to stand corrected, it's not eight teachers, it's 11 teachers that are doing dual enrollment. I apologize.
Thank you.
Yes, conversational French, we are looking to add conversational French to our curriculum. This is a third year French class, if you will. What we have found is a lot of our students have not gone on to a Level 3 French because of, a lot of times deals with a lot of grammar and so on. This is specific to the, to culture and conversation of the, of French. This is considered to be a final year, if you will. In other words, students will not be going on to a French 4. Students going to French 4 and eventually AP French would follow the normal track of French 1, 2, 3, okay, and 4, 5. That is conversational French. European history, if you recall, we had European literature and history. We are no longer teaching the literature aspect, we are, but we are going to continue with the European history, so that is going to continue. Wind Ensemble, this is just simply a replacement of concert band. We are still having band, the band is not going away, it's just a name change, if you will, to Wind Ensemble. The standardized math prep is simply just remediation for students needing additional remediation for math test purposes, specifically for Keystone exam, students that need that additional help. And finally, our advanced calculus concepts, that is a calculus 3. We have found that our students have maxed out of their AP Calc, BC, and we have nowhere else, so this is actually getting them a third year of calculus.
Calculus is sixth grade. My daughter graduated '06, and all we know that the big thing to do was AP Calc. That was huge. Now I think they take it in the womb. Is that correct?
They are advanced.
Seven years, we've gone quite a long way.
Now that won't be an AP course, true? That would just be a regular course?
Just a regular course, yes. Yes.
Thank you very much for the information.
Thank you.
That will be, those changes will be on your agenda for approval next week. Do you have any questions for Mr. Kralik? Also on your agenda, Mrs. Elder mentioned the agreement with Seton Hill University, that will be on for approval next week. Also, to approve a renewal of a letter of agreement with the Presley Ridge School for the 2013-2014 school year, and to approve the University of Pittsburgh at Greensburg Student Teacher Education Agreement for the 2013-2014 school year. And I will move for adoption, Resolution Number 192, to approve the revision to the 2012-2013 school calendar. So, thank you. It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 192. Any more discussion, any questions on motion?
How many days have we missed so far?
The day we missed last week, Wednesday, was the second day.
Second.
Yes. Okay, hearing the other discussion, all those in favor of approving Resolution Number 192, please say aye. Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. That ends my part of the agenda, and I'll turn it over again to Mrs. Kozar for bargaining supply.
Thank you. Okay, we have an update, please, on the weather change. You all have...
Good evening. I've never watched the Weather Channel as much as I have. February's been probably the worst month I've seen, which might not possibly have. Had 20 working days, 24 Sundays. We had 10 days we could actually move earth, and the progress we made was pretty substantial. We made a great hire, we have custom contracting, I mean, he's got personal ties, but he's been, John Stoss has been very, very well making sure this project's going well, so much kudos to him and his group. So that's a, basically, if you're building a pad for your fieldhouse, you've reached out elevation, you've completed your striping of topsoil, the baseball field, which you have excess of topsoil. We've been discussions with the private supply committee, the possibility of selling that topsoil. So if you've seen behind the junior high, you have probably six to seven tons, six to seven thousand tons of topsoil that could be sold. So we'll continue to discuss that with custom contracting and with the private supply committee to possibly do a bid advertising for that. Next big steps are undergrounds, your underground utilities, site for electric plumbing and such, I'll be getting here shortly, and then you'll start seeing things come out of the ground. Footings, case on the press box, so this is what's, things, you know, weather permitting, are starting moving pretty rapidly. Again, schedule, we're still good. Even with bad weather, we're still ahead of schedules slightly. I'd say we're on schedule, I'd be comfortable in saying we're on schedule. Things are progressing well. No more surprises as far as the field and site, as far as soils, no change orders to date other than the last meeting. Things are progressing well. The back of the package, I gave you those photographs, kind of give you a bird's eye at changes. Each month I'll provide this kind of snapshot of, again, the month, end of the month, you can see the progress you can make in these working days. A big step was West Penn. Utility poles are removing, located approximately 20 to 30 yards have been moved, I should say, the new poles have been placed, wire being pulled later this week. So that's a big step. We get them moved because, of course, can't go perp or you have these utility poles, so it's been moving very well. Hank and Max's architecture are doing great, submitting, making sure we're on task as far as that information. No surprises for our fires from contractors, no surprises as far as change orders, so things are going very well.
Another guy that is in the picture should start getting more interesting. More has any questions for Congress?
I just had one comment. I actually was invited out to dinner this weekend, and I was sitting at dinner with a friend of ours, who is the CEO of Citizens Film Company and cable company.
Dennis?
Yes, yes. And he said, "You almost cost me a lot of money this week." And I went, "Oh." I'm guessing it's not as a knitwear designer that I cost you a lot of money, I bet it's in my role as a school board director. And he said, "Yeah, I got a call from the guy at West Penn, Jim Piper, we're going to cut this fiber if you don't get out there now." And it is the main fiber from Catsburg to St. Vincent, and he had to come up here and see if there was slack in the line for them to move the pole, and there wasn't. And he said, "If they had actually gone to him and cut it, it would have shut off internet for, you know, many, 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 many customers." So he was really grateful for the phone call.
I spoke to Dennis on Monday, expressed the concern of getting them mobilized very quickly. There was questions for a long period of time, who actually owned the fiber line. West Penn, so there's a little bit of blame there, not to get genetic control, but...
It was, it was like, "Oh, salmon doesn't taste nearly as good as salmon."
West Penn has issues too. That utility line does be Youngstown and Lorimer as well, so if they make that move, hopefully...
Yeah, it was, he was concerned about kind of internet, because I never trust them first. So thank you for keeping the water safe.
Anything else?
And then, there's a list here of the bid of things that will have to be awarded and enabled for your information.
I'd like to introduce Chris Barton from NTP Wireless. They recently approached us about the possibility of putting an intent on our campus somewhere to provide cell service and generate some additional income for the school district. So we asked Chris to kind of maybe give you a real quick synopsis of that and answer any questions. So thank you for coming.
Thanks, Dan. My name is Chris Barton. As Dan said, basically the purpose of being here tonight is that Verizon engineers have realized that this is an area that they want to improve their service. The kind of unique location of this property on the high ground makes this a primary candidate for a location of either a rooftop or a tower site. The unique scenario of the fields being renovated also presents an opportunity because potentially Verizon could essentially take the place of one light pole, installing its antennas kind of on the top, and the array of lights down below on the pole. I approached Ms. Swigard, and I've met with Dan, and said... Um, I have coached Ms. Swigard and I've met with Dan at the site. Um, and at this point, we've submitted to Verizon and are waiting for Verizon to come back with a selected candidate. Um, we expect it to be this, this site, at which point we would come back and, and do another site walk with the engineers present. Because we did look at the rooftop of the auditorium, um, as well as, as I said, the tower site. So, um, basically, another site walk and Verizon engineers reviewing the candidates would kind of firm up, um, which location would be best. So I'll make myself available to everyone. I know that there's oftentimes a ton of questions about the proposal.
When you talk about locations, you talking about several locations in the area or just the two locations here at the school?
Um, in the area, basically, the engineers at Verizon, they, they sometimes will have a large kind of quarter-mile radius. In this case, um, their entire, their entire search area as it stands is the high school, um, as well as the country club to the south. Obviously, because of aesthetic reasons, the country club, um, did actually enter into, in a letter of intent, but that site would be substantially further south and away from kind of Verizon's ideal area to optimize the coverage. Um, so these are kind of, those are the two candidates.
Did you do additional leasing on your tower?
Um, that depends. Um, if, if what they do is replace a light pole for essentially a monopole tower that has lights on it, um, it's likely that the site below, um, wouldn't have ample square footage for additional collocators. Um, that would all depend on the kind of ground space available at the site. Ideally, Verizon would, would lease a, a larger plot and then sublease to other collocators. Um, but again, that's all kind of dependent on, on what the owner can, can offer in terms of the lease area.
And how big's the, how big an area is it?
I mean, what they seek is a one hundred by one hundred foot area. Obviously, in this case, that won't work. Um, what I would suggest is that they go kind of to a forty-five by twenty area, which means that kind of, um, based on the drawings that I've seen of, of the kind of renovations, it looks like in the center field of the outfield, there's gonna be a ring of lights. Uh, essentially, they would just install a monopole tower, painted to match the other poles and install a fence compound. It looks like it'd be kind of, yeah, in the center field mall.
Are there any other questions?
What's the timeline for this process?
Uh, at this point, it's, it's kind of in Verizon's hands. We expect kind of thirty days until they select a primary candidate. Um, after that thirty-day review period, then we'd, um, they'd request additional things like, um, they'd pull a title, they'd do a phase one analysis, um, they'd have a site walk with their engineers. In this case, they would probably want to meet with the engineers that are, um, installing the fields and the lights. And it would move on from there. Ultimately, obviously, the business terms would be firm up and then Verizon attorney would draft, it would draft a lease for review, or if the board rather, it'd be on its own paper, then it would present Verizon attorney with a, with a lease, a lease draft.
You talk about putting this in the center field.
That seems to be the most logical place, if the pole is selected and not the rooftop.
How about your access route?
Well, it looks like, it's kind of, from the drawings that I saw from your A&E firm that's doing the build, it looks like, um, there would be access, I believe via the lower road, it would allow access, um, it would kind of be the least intrusive, I guess, in terms of, of how they'd access the site. After they actually build the tower, the access is pretty minimal. It's not like, um, you know, the gas companies, for example, around here need kind of daily access or at least a couple times per week. After the tower's actually built, it'd be more like a once, once a month kind of maintenance.
Without a vandal, it'd protect the copper or something.
Yeah. That's the wild card, I guess.
Yeah.
But there, uh, there would be a fence compound around it.
And any event would be completed before or during art construction, right? So it's not going along avenue, right?
That would be ideal. I, I don't know what the timelines are for the field installation or the light installation.
About a year away or not?
Um, well, it should work then. Basically, um, you know, unless there's some, you know, unique circumstance that allows them to expedite, they're looking at kind of construction in first quarter of 2014. Um, so basically, the process is getting the lease ironed out, getting the zoning and permitting squared away. And then after that, then Verizon bids out the job and orders the material for the, for the structure. Um, obviously, that includes going back to you for, for approval of the design and...
Are there no other questions? Obviously, it looks like a palm tree, so... So, go ahead. You know, again, when they already talked fifteen hundred dollars a month, I think is what we talked about, eighteen thousand dollars a year, um, with a building escalated over a period of time, you know, that would... But we'll wait for your backup, obviously, from you, Chris, and then I'll continue to have, you know, Keith Ford and Warren and see where it goes. It's better than our cash flow. More income. In the meantime, if you think of any fielding questions, don't hesitate to call me or email me. I can give a lot of Chris, we can continue to, you know, answering questions that might arise.
Sure. And, and again, as we discussed, the, the appearance is obviously the, the kind of big issue that everyone wants to see answered. And, um, ultimately, there would be photo simulations done by the A&E firm that would kind of show exactly what it looked like.
Well, thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, the last page of the company's plan is item number seven in the packet. And our next meeting will be...
Thank you, Mrs. Kozar. Student activities and recreation, Dr. Lachlan.
And information on the winter sports recognition is Wednesday, Thursday, seven. Also, the wrestling championship update, the Julie Fletcher was the state champion and was in the one hundred and six pound weight class. And then Zach Zabatski was third place in the one hundred and six pound weight class. And the swimming championships are this weekend.
Exciting. Thank you. Community relations, Dr. Zorn.
The community parks and recreation, that's in the packet. Resolution to approve YSC's community condition contract, chapter three-one, one thirteen, so...
It's been moved and seconded. We adopt Resolution Number 193. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously.
And authorize a letter of support for the, the community parks and recreation grant application for the Department of Conservation, asking to use, have the resources for the government, we can have a trail. The thing for the Riverdale Park field update, we're gonna take it over to...
Um, through the generosity of the, um, community, um, we're going to do some repairs to the Riverdale Field drainage system, um, no cost to the district. That work is hopefully starting in early April with the weather cooperates. Any questions?
And I suppose there's gonna be a lot of time for me to, uh, junior high students to write an essay about healthy living, healthy health, sponsored by Southern Health. And the winner of that contest will be pictured on the billboard on Rockford. It's kind of an essay writing contest that was sponsored on good, healthy living.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Zorn. Uh, Westmoreland, we, um, we, on, on your agenda for next week will be the approval of the 2013-2014 Westmoreland Intermediate Unit General Operating Budget. Um, there are some changes to this year's budget, including an increase in monthly pay, but, um, and I think Mr. Watson can tell you that that's not all bad.
No, yeah, absolutely, it is not. Thanks. Um, you don't have to reference her right now, but including your back for the finance committee minutes, and in that, that meeting, we talked a little bit about the ID budget because we do a little more detail. But the general fund or the general operating budget for the ID, historically for our school district, has always been level. It's always been around thirty-three thousand dollars. We're looking at about a nine thousand dollar increase for next year, but that's a good thing because they're changing the way that, uh, they sort of operate. Uh, we receive about six hundred thousand dollars per year in IDEA funding, uh, that's federal dollars that flows through the intermediate unit. The ID, historically, would retain fifty percent of that and then transfer, pass along the other fifty percent of us. They would hold that back for services that they provide to all school districts in Westmoreland County. Over the past several years, school districts have been talking, we, um, sort of pushed it for, for a slight change to that. They'll now pass through ninety percent of those funds to the districts who would receive those. And then they'll bill us specifically for any services that we use. And we prefer this method because now they're paying for exactly what we, we use. Whereas in the past, they would sort of utilize that, those funds to offset their general operating budget, which allowed them to maintain a, a level farm. So while we're seeing an increase in, in our contribution to the general operating cost, we believe we're gonna be able to retain more of the IDA funding, use it to offset, you know, services that are, are things that we provide to our district. In addition to that, um, the other, uh, method that they, they would do from time to time was to, uh, adjust the, uh, cost for exceptionality in the special education budget to offset some increased costs. We hope to see that to make it level or slightly decreased, um, because, you know, they'll be billing exactly for what those, those services cost generally. So there's a nine thousand dollar increase, but it's, uh, we, we feel that we'll have a little bit more flexibility in the administration as well about that. Are there any questions?
Thank you. There is a copy of the budget for you to look over because you will be voting on it next week at our, um, regular meeting. Um, also, in, in your packet, item number ten is the, uh, WIU board meeting minutes from the meeting on, on February the twenty-sixth. That's all I have for that. Uh, number twelve, board policy, please be liaison, Mrs. Elder.
Yes. In packet, item number eleven is the board policy number nine thirteen point one, which is a policy that would allow us to do what the fellow was proposing earlier about putting advertising on our website. Um, we'll get over and we'll be, uh, looking at that for adoption next week, final adoption. And it is in second reading.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Elder. Transportation, Dr. Lachlan.
Thank you. Uh, next meeting, transportation.
Thank you. Technology, Mr. Palmer.
Thank you, Ms. Mates. Um, we have our technology meeting, um, this afternoon at, um, six. Um, meetings will follow next week's packet. Meetings minutes will follow next week's packet. Our next meeting's, uh, at sixteen. Thank you, Ms. Mates.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Superintendent's recommendations, Mrs. Swigard.
Next week, um, we will ask the board to vote on two retirements and other resignations. As you're well aware, um, the retirement incentive due date for a letter of retirement is March thirty-first. You are starting to receive a few, and you have four names on the board agenda for retirement this year that we will vote on next week. Um, I would ask the board to move on Resolution Number 194, which is the substitute custodial workers that are listed there, the creed that are listed.
Swigard.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. We adopt Resolution Number 194. Any questions or comments on that motion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously.
And I'll go back. I did forget the item that we are hoping to have some substitute teacher recommendations for next week for approval, as well as, we are doing second round interviews for the Badley Elementary School principal opening, uh, beginning July one. Those interviews will be Thursday evening at Badley Elementary. Uh, next week, we are hoping to bring the recommendation to the board for approval, as well as have a recommendation for the food service truck director recommendation that we, um, actually accepted a resignation about a month and a half ago. We're having difficulty finding, finding that position. And the other business, uh, statement on financial interests, uh, if you have not submitted those, please do so. This Thursday is the darkness of champions are next to us, excuse me, March twenty-first. And, um, there is an exhibit of the Santa and the Gineer Artists of the Twenty Fourth Century, uh, twenty, uh, great illustrations of school district student pieces of our input presentation, uh, recommending all the high buildings in your district. If you have some time, um, it's now through April twenty-first, two thousand and...
Thank you. Anything else to come up this evening?
Yeah. Uh, there's a, uh, thing I saw in my grand dollars packet that's been on the school today. There are some T-shirts in part of the elementary schools for autism awareness. And they're, they're kind of a nice T-shirt because the design is a, is a paw print. And, and then one part of the paw is that puzzle piece. Remember the autism puzzle pieces that we got some pins for? And, and, uh, they're being sold at the elementary schools. If you're interested in getting those, I think it's important that we know that those are available and, um, it's, it's like the end of the street if you have to have the thing again. Junior high...
Junior high, sign them as well.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Elder. Anything else to come up this evening? And we are adjourned. Thank you for your time. Have a nice...